Welcome everyone to the January 22nd Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is for the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see everybody here this evening. I'd just like to announce right from the start that Supervisor Ottinger had prior obligations this evening and Head of Zoning Mike Catalia will be zooming in. The Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 5:30 where we discussed personnel and litigation. The Board of Supervisors also held a workshop at 6:30 where we had spoke about the copper kettle out on Bridgetown Pike and Bristol Road. Apparently, the copper kettle is under agreement contingent on township approval. The family who is interested in purchasing the copper kettle is asking the township if they could possibly be able to use some township property located around the kettle and the Board had discussed it and, you know, we're going to move forward with having Mr. Catalia look into it. Also, we also spoke about the Hometown Hero banners and sending a review that the Board had time to look at to our VAC to get some input from them. We spoke about updating our town center ordinance and how to implement it moving forward. Mike Catalia also spoke to us in regards to zoning compliance issues throughout the township. He gave us an update on permits and creating a portal to help with zoning complaints. And we also spoke about updating our fee schedule, which is on the agenda for tonight. Mr. Mulholland spoke about the 2025 calendar of events. He spoke about tonight's Christmas house decorating contest, which we have some winners here this evening. We look forward to that later. And also about updating the Dolphin property courts. Mr. Everett spoke about a Green Light Go grant that we had applied for. Mr. Ryan had spoke about a tax allocation audit that we do for our fire departments. Mr. Coppin spoke about a undedicated road off of Travers Road, which is no road and possibly having it dedicated. And Chief Crimmell spoke about fire code ordinances being updated. So with that said, proclamation, resolution 2025-8 honoring Father Mike Davis. Where are you, Father Mike? Tonight, we are honored to have Father Mike Davis from the Assumption BVM Parish here. As many of us know Father Mike, as many of us know Father Mike will be moving from the Assumption Parish. We congratulate him and wish him well in his future endeavors. But with that said, his departure is a huge loss for our entire community. Father Mike has always gone above and beyond, not only as a priest, but as a community leader that we all look up to. Before I have Supervisor Bowman read tonight's proclamation honoring Father Mike, I would also like to read a letter by somebody who had sent this to me that knows Father Mike very, very well. The person who sent the letter is Jillian Clark. Once again, Jillian Clark. I met Father Mike all the way back in grade school. When he came to our parish, everyone was taken back at not only the fact that he wanted to learn everyone's name, but the fact that he was actually succeeding at it. He came to visit us at our grade school and he was even learning the names of the students that were not part of his parish. He later said Mass at my high school a few times and asked me to speak to him after Mass, which got me out of class. Big thanks, Father Mike. Father Mike took on a role of being our spiritual father so beautifully as we always knew that he was praying for us and seeking to better the parish in any way he could. We made an effort, he made an effort to make it known to me as a young age that he was proud of me, something that meant so much to me, revealing God's love for me. This is not an uncommon opinion in our church about Father Mike. Many people will tell you that Father Mike has helped them feel God's love and made them feel welcome to the church again. Father Mike even braved a blizzard to marry my husband and myself in the mountains, which I was at, and it truly was a blizzard. I know I can speak for our entire church when I say that we are grateful for the years we've had with Father Mike and that we pray that God brings him great joy as he continues to do God's work. Father Mike, you will be missed with much love, the Clark and Solinsky family. Now, before Supervisor Bowman reads this, I notice people here tonight who would like to come up and say a few words. If one by one, please come up to the podium, we want to honor Father Mike with whoever would like to come up and speak on his behalf.
I'm sorry? Do I need to beat the microphone? Yes, this one good.
That's perfect.
Father Mike, you joined Feasterville Fire Company 2017. You make it a point to come to just about every event that you possibly can with your schedule and all, some things you do have to miss. You've been there at good times and you've been there at the worst of times. And the worst of times is when we need it the most. Our fire police sergeant was involved in a tragic car accident, ultimately passed away. You were right there, you were at the hospital with the family. We had a two-year-old kid who was killed by a fallen tree limb. I came here, picked you up, and we went right over there and you spent time with the family and that helped more than you could possibly imagine. One of the first times I met you, I think it was a fatal fire or a double fatal car accident, it was one of them, and you said to me, "Are you okay?" And I said, "Yeah, yeah, I'm okay. I'm a fireman, I'm tough, yeah, I'm okay." And I said, "Why'd you ask?" And you said, "Well, you know with that..." I said, "Well, you know, you get desensitized to it." And then I realized afterwards that, you know what, maybe, I'm not lying, you don't mind of myself, because maybe you don't, but I think you helped me see that and you're a very gentle person. I sat in with you with some of our Critical Incident Stress Management Meeting, our Citizens Meeting. You help more than you possibly know and I appreciate it. The whole fire company appreciates it. We're going to miss you and we did get you a little gift here too, so you're always going to be a part of Feasterville Fire Company.
That was beautiful, Chief Cummings. Would anybody else like to come up tonight?
David Whitaker, President of Lower South Fire Company and a proud member of Assumption Parish. The officers and members of the Lower Southampton Fire Department want to extend our heartfelt thank you to Father Mike for all he has done for our department during his spiritual tenure at Assumption BVM and the Feasterville Fire Company. He has always supported and made himself available to our members, their families and the community, whether it be in an emergency situation, religious or a casual setting. We thank him for his compassion and unity and brotherhood he has shown us all and most importantly, with his reverent guidance. We wish him well on the next calling of his journey. He will no doubt be a great success. We are blessed to have him on our team and we want him to know that our doors are always open for him to come back and visit us. Once again, Father Mike, thanks from the Lower Southampton Fire Department.
You know, he should be front, sir.
He should be sitting right there. Just sit here. Just sit here, yes, sit here, please. Just come up here.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak? We have four more. Supervisor, Mr. Ed Shannon, we'd love to have you come up, sir.
Thank you. He's the boss. I'm the chief. That's how we know each other so well. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Give him the tissue. What? Give me the tissues.
How you doing, chief?
I'm all right. I'm sad. I'm sad. I'm sad too.
I know. I know. I have something here from his boss. Not really his boss. He thinks he's his boss. Anyway, Eric. Everybody knows Eric, right? We wanted to do some nice things for Father and his employer decided that he had another issue tonight. I offered that I'd be honored to say that about him. Let me just read most of it to you. "A good kind of generous pastor who won the hearts of many people at Assumption BVM. A wonderful spiritual guide, especially for those who are struggling with their faith. A priest with a special devotion to the Blessed Mary, Mother. A pastor who always..." I gotta get supported here. "...a pastor who has made sacraments available to anyone who asks them for particularly. A person for his effort to learn and remember names." We talked about that a little bit, right? "Knowing that a person's name is perhaps the most important and personal thing about them and thus worth remembering. A pastor who always tries to include everyone in the discussion and decision-making process and give everyone an opportunity to have their say. A supervisor who assures office staff of his confidence and support in decisions made with the good of the parish in mind. Having trouble with this. A man whose actions are motivated by a sense of fairness and doing the right thing. A man with the courage, urge to admit..." "...who gently natures personal growth and confidence in others by encouraging them to step aside outside their comfort and zones and do things they might not otherwise do. A pastor who's encouraged and laid faithful take active roles in the church's ministry. A man who's willing to teach when asked and who is gentle in corrections. A priest who is always willing to go the extra mile, not only figuratively but also literally. Father Mike was as my superior and colleague. Father Mike has always allowed me the opportunity to fulfill exercise all the experts expects of my ministry. Father Mike always remote a college, collegial working relationship among all clergy associates." God bless. I'm sorry I mixed about half of it, but I just couldn't get through. My apologies for that. Anybody else want to read it? They're welcome to do it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Anytime. Thank you.
Called me and made me come. No, that's not true. He was very happy he was here.
Thank you. Thank you. Chief Crimmell, sir, how about you?
Father Mike, I'm going to miss you. I appreciate some of the talks we had and actually enjoyed coming on and talking to the austros a couple of times that made me laugh. Thanks for being there for us. I hope I was there for you and good luck in your new job. You're welcome.
Anybody else tonight? Would anybody else like to come up and say a few words? Mr. Kirk? We have a special treat for you also, Father Mike. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, special treat. Here we go. Here we go.
Don't abuse it. Come on.
I'll sit right here and say it right to you. How about that? Make that easier real quick. Sure. Go around, carry on, please, says about you. My hat? Old school, sexy baby. All right, I'm going to just up on the floor, just work. All right, here we go. So this has been a peaceful one. Every time you see us, you make us smile. You make people happy, you give them gifts, you know your names, you got style. You make love and send for your little home. Thank you for visiting those who are alone. We know you're going to love Melbourne. It's your new home. Father Mike is leaving Melbourne to Melbourne Treehouse to help deep our relationship with Jesus Christ. Melbourne Treehouse, you know, the oldest and largest cathedral tree community in the country that you know. Each year you home, 250 retreats, reflections, special events, so I'm told. Thank you for making the South your home. Thank you for visiting all those people that are alone. You make all of us happy, don't you know? Father Mike is leaving and going to Melbourne, don't you know? You never be alone. Father Mike is leaving, he's going away. Someone back will come back and say, "Hey, hey, Father Mike, nobody's always your home." Cause he's leaving and going to Melbourne, leaving and going to Melbourne, leaving and going to Melbourne. Thank you and God bless you. Good night.
I dare anybody in the crowd to come up and talk that, okay? Go ahead, I dare you. Father Mike, before we read this proclamation, our state rep, Joe Hogan, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but he's presented me to present to you a citation from his office and he also wanted to thank you for everything that you've done for our community. So at this point, Supervisor, would you take the honor and read the proclamation?
It would be my pleasure. Proclamation Resolution 2025-8. Whereas Lower Southampton Township is a township of the second class in the county of Bucks Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to the authority vested in it by the laws and commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton does hereby resolve as follows. Whereas Reverend Michael J. Davis has served as the pastor of Assumption BVM Parish since his installation on October 24th, 2015 and is leaving after nine years of dedicated service to the parishioners of Assumption BVM. End. Whereas Father Mike was ordained on May 16th, 1987, Father Mike has served on the faculty of Bishop Kendrick High School and St. Maria Goretty High School. Father Mike has served as a parochial vicar, parochial administrator, and a pastor in several parishes. End. Whereas Father Mike serves as the National Spiritual Director of the Flame of Love of the Immaculate Heart of Mary Movement. End. Whereas Father Mike has also served as the chaplain for Feasterville Fire Company since July of 2017. He is well-known for attending every fundraising event and fire prevention expo and for leading the department in prayer before the annual Santa Run. According to Chief Chris Cummings, Father Mike is always present and provides support to the firefighters and community members during tragic incidents. And whereas Father Mike works tirelessly for the parishioners of an assumption BVM, he is recognized as a wonderful spiritual guide, especially for those struggling with their faith. Father Mike has always made the sacraments available to anyone who seeks them, particularly reconciliation and sacrament of the sick. End. Whereas Father Mike continually strives to include everyone in discussions and lead the community with a sense of fairness and encouragement. And whereas Father Mike has a remarkable ability to remember everyone's name and makes each person feel like a lifelong friend. Father Mike was always open to meeting with anyone needing advice regardless of their background. End. Whereas Father Mike's kindness, friendship, and willingness to help will be missed. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton, honor Reverend Michael J. Davis, congratulate him on his accomplishments at Assumption BVM Parish, and express our heartwarming thanks for the outstanding contributions to our community. Adopted by at least a majority of the members of the Board of Supervisors at a duly advertised public meeting of the township on the 22nd day of January 2025, at which a quorum was present.
And with that being said, do we have a motion as stated, as read by Supervisor Bowman?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we honor Father Mike Davis with this proclamation.
There you go. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Peratino, I don't see any need for discussion with this. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Father Mike. At this time, we're going to take a few-minute break. Father Mike, would you like to say a few words or...
All right. Chief, can you fix your mic? Yeah. Hey, Cindy?
He freelances, he knows.
I didn't get to say it before.
I'm, to say I'm humbled, it really doesn't say it all. Really, the better expression is I'm blown away, blown away by first invitation to come here tonight and then blown away by all that I've heard. And so it is a challenge, as you've heard, I mean, I'm a priest over 37 years, but yet this has been my longest stay. And so it's harder to leave, you know, because in over nine years, I've made more connections, I've had more experiences than I've had in any other assignment because they were shorter term. And so now as I move on to another assignment, you know, so reading what I'm familiar with in parish ministry and going to a learning curve, you know, that I just have to go through this first year to learn this special ministry. And so, I mean, I'm confident. I mean, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be a priest reading people to faith if I didn't believe myself, so I do believe the Lord will be with me in that. But yet, I'm just more than humbled, more like blown away, you know, by this whole experience tonight. And so I just appreciate it, all that you do, all that you do in the community. And so it's a privilege to serve as one's chaplain, no doubt about that. And to have a little bit of a connection to sixes, sometimes a connection with fours, particularly when you responded on December 29th to the building fire at Assumption. Responded severely promptly. And also too, due to Officer Matthews diligence, happened to just be on site, saw the flames first and just radioed it in, you know, and our company's always respond rapidly. And so you did a great job in preventing further damage. So to your service, to the community, you should do voluntarily. That always humbles me and that impresses me too. And the community can be very grateful to all of you. So thank you for this unprecedented honor. This is the first in my life, so thank you all so very much.
At this time, we are going to...
Let me say one thing, please, and I don't want to take up too much time, but I just want to tell a very quick story. I don't know Father Mike. I've only met him one time. I'm a member of Good Counsel Parish. But in November 16th, a tragedy struck our house and Mr. Shannon over there was, you know, very kind, but he offered a mass for remembrance. And my wife and I went over to Assumption on that day it was being said and Father Mike said the mass. And I was much worse than I am right now. I was overcome with emotion as I left the mass. And Father Mike was outside greeting everybody as I left the building. And I'm walking away from him and he can evidently see this person is having basically a breakdown. And my wife was standing next to me and he grabs my wife and says, "Is this your husband? What's going on?" And I was just unconsolable at the time. And he was trying to do everything to try and make me just feel, you know, the presence and that somebody else cared. And that should say enough. I know, we all know the character of the man, but I just think, I've never had a chance to convey that story. I did convey it to Ed, who I told him if Father Mike says to you, "I met this guy, he said you had a mass set for him," and I couldn't console him. I said, "Tell him I'm sorry." Congratulations and good luck on your future endeavor.
At this time, we're going to recess for a few minutes. I know people in the crowd want to take a little photos. I personally want to go down there and thank Father Mike myself. We have some gifts, some departing gifts. We have a plant, we have some candy, we have some awards to give you, Father Mike. So, you know, we're going to break for a few minutes and we'll meet back here in a couple. All right, I mean, everybody has time, if we could just go back to our seats and we will continue the meeting. Thank you, thank you Chief Cummins. I'll tell you what, that was just terrific tonight.
Thank you everybody.
You don't want to touch, I may be.
He's in fact.
Great seeing you tonight. Thank you.
I don't think I'm sick. I don't think I'm sick, but I don't want to take any chances.
All righty. And with all that excitement tonight, with all this excitement, I actually forgot to introduce Mr. Tracy Hunt, who was filling in tonight for Mr. Frank Dillon. Mr. Hunt, please forgive me, sir, we had a lot going on.
No, no problem.
All righty, now moving on, we had the presentation of the winners to the Christmas House Decorating Contest. Mr. Mo Holland, sir.
Thank you Board Chair. So I'd like to thank all the families that participated in the Christmas House Decorating Contest this year. We had a record number of houses participate as well as votes cast. I drove through the township with my family one night, and we loved all the houses, everything was great. The thing that stood out to me the most was seeing multiple, seeing same cars at multiple houses. So people were driving around checking it out, I saw Cindy out the same night, so we were crisscrossing. So people were getting out and checking it out, so we're very thankful for that, it means the word's getting out about our programming and things, so I was happy for that. I'll read off the three winners, and then they can come up and get their awards, and we'll do pictures as well.
Absolutely, sure, we can break for a moment after that, too.
So third place was Kenneth Foster of 665 Rosewood Avenue. Second place was Joseph Ryan of 27 Over Road. And finally, first place went to Tim Walker of 124 Rosewood Avenue. And I know, I know at least the Ryan family is here, I'm not sure if anybody else was, oh, there was here, Walker, oh, they're all here, perfect. And their awards, terrific.
All right, we will also, well, I guess we don't even really have to necessarily break, we can just have the winners come up. Yeah, absolutely.
So I had third Foster.
Yeah, do it, yeah. You guys just come up, we'll do a quick picture.
I'll see the background.
Sure.
Come here, we'll stand by.
Did you put up all those lights? Did you put up all those lights? I really enjoyed looking at your house.
I thought we were just going to stand in the view of it.
Yeah, let's stand by.
Okay, okay. I feel like I'm photobombing.
All right. Everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
Very good.
And from the township, we want to thank all of you guys for doing everything you do, that's terrific. When we have residents driving around to look at the stuff, it really brings a lot to the Christmas season, so thank you again very much.
So I wanted to thank you because you provided a whole evening of entertainment for me and my daughter, who put on our Penn State jammies, got hot chocolate, and we drove the every, it took me, how long did it take you? It took me like almost three hours to hit every house.
It took a while.
We really had an outstanding enrollment and involvement this year, so I want to thank you for all your hard work. I don't know if everybody else got a chance to view, but some of the displays were, it must have taken you weeks to put those together, so I want to thank you, and we're going to make it, my daughter and I, that's going to be our Christmas tradition for us going forward, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you again. All right, at this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment, if anybody would like to come up, please state your name, if you could write your name and your address down in the logbook, and there's always a three-minute timer.
Hi, my name's Glenn Stevens. I live at 345 East Middletown Avenue. Really enjoyed all the kind words for Father Mike. I assume everyone spoke true, sounds like a really heck of a nice guy. I wish that I came here to speak accolades to Mike Italia, but that is not the case. So I said I lived at 345 East Middletown Avenue, and that is that at that location where Mike Italia, that's the man right there, if nobody knows who he is, that man stole my property and gave it to his friend. Now I don't know why he did this, and I would very much like to know. Now being the victim of Mike Italia, you would think I probably had questions for him, right? I would like to know why he did this, but Mike Italia refuses to answer questions. Now as the taxpayer and his employer, I deserve answers to my questions, I demand answers to my questions, but Mr. Hunt, the guy you're filling in for, told Mike Italia he doesn't have to answer them. Now another thing that Mr. Dillon said was that Mike Italia did not have the authority from this township to do what he did to me. He didn't have the authority to do it. I can prove not with a, not without a shadow of a doubt that he did what he did. So what I'm concerned with is why are we paying Mr. Dillon to represent him when he wasn't acting on behalf of the township? He was acting on his own, he may have used the power and the influence he has among these people to do what he did to me, but he did not have the authority. Why are we paying for his counsel when he was acting as a citizen? The plow truck driver who did my street and cuts the grass, if he, if that man is also a thief, does he get representation, is that part of his package? That's an legit question. Does everybody get representation? You get this many holidays, this many paid days off, this many personal days, and free representation, no matter what crimes you commit, is that, is that how it works? Why is Mr. Dillon representing Mr. Italia when he was not acting for the township? That's a legitimate question. Because Mr. Dillon also told you not to engage with me, right? Because Mr. Dillon, being paid this money, has done nothing but hide the truth from these people, from the taxpayers, that's all he has done, is hide the truth. He has had Mike Italia to plead the fifth for the crimes he has committed, so he doesn't go to jail and he so he doesn't lose his job. He told you, tell me if I'm wrong, not to allow me to ask Mike Italia questions. Did he not? Was that not Mr. Dillon's counsel to you? That you paid for, you paid him, and he used that money, we paid him, and he used that money to hide the truth from us. How wrong is that? Honest to God, how could that possibly be wronger? We are paying for a cover-up. We are paying to have our own, to have the truth hidden from us, from our township. And you're not going to comment because Mr. Dillon told you not to, right?
Mr. Stevens.
Do not engage with Mr. Stevens.
We have, we've, all of us, I believe, have engaged with you, all of us have told you our feelings.
Honestly, sir, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but all you've talked about is a survey, it has nothing to do with a survey. My property was stolen by that man right there.
Mr. Stevens, your time is up, sir, thank you very much.
You did not engage, sir.
No, I absolutely, I absolutely have.
They're concerned to me. Tonight something concerned me, that we are paying.
Just so everybody knows who's watching from here or watching at home, you know, the conversation we had once again, where you told me this wasn't your property, you maintained.
It's not gonna do a property, I'm talking about my, those bricks were mine.
Your bricks shouldn't have been on your neighbor's property.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't Mike tell me to move them?
All right, your time is up, Mr. Stevens.
Why wouldn't Mike tell me to move them?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, thank you, sir.
See, the engagement is over, right?
Yep, no, your time is up, thank you, Mr. Stevens.
So when my, when my son leaves a bike on his neighbor's property, it's no longer his bike, right?
Chief Kremble.
I'm going.
Mike?
Chief Kremble, I think it's time, all right? We've gone above and beyond every meeting. Thank you, sir, you are absolutely allowed to come back, that is your given right. All right, I apologize about that, folks, but anybody else like to come up tonight for public comment?
Jim, get closer.
I just have a question, I don't know if you can answer it or not. Dr. Frank, I look at the expenditure reports and so forth, and one really caught my attention this time. There's two, in the general fund, it's $102,585 for the Seltzer Group, and then there's another $8,500 from the sewer fund. Now I looked up the Seltzer Group, $8,500, $8,500 and something.
I think that's a reoccurring.
Yeah, anyhow.
Are you on reoccurring?
Yeah, these were, they came out with the information on your website, which I look at on a regular basis. Anyhow, I looked up the Seltzer Group, and I understand they're an insurance firm, and they do risk management. I just don't understand what it's about, I'm just looking for an explanation of what those, it looks like they're kits or some kind of thing that we're buying.
Mr. Ryan, are you able to help Mr. Cates out with any?
The risks, from my understanding, are, like, we have safety classes, so we had a safety class, I believe, today. By doing those safety classes once a month, I believe we get a discount for the risk assessments. So like, they give us certain risk on certain, like, stuff, like, for instance, a vehicle, we needed to put a guiderail on it, which caused two injuries, but now we have to do an investigation type thing, so I hope that answered your question, Tom.
I guess they're kits, I'm not quite sure, it just, it just seems like a lot of money for.
It's a down payment.
Pardon me?
What you're talking about right now is the down payment.
The total's over $102,000.
Yeah, I think the total every year is about like $252,000, it's done in eight installments, eight or 10 installments.
It reduces our risk in the township, it's a lifetime issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Good to see you, Mr. Chrisanthus, how are you?
I've had better days. I'm raising cane today. My name's Frank Chrisanthus, 301 Heights Lane. In December, Mr. Parrotano had an interesting closing comment about costs and saying that, well, if you know something that we can cut, let us know, let you guys know. Well, that's not our job, that's your job. You're our stewards of our money, you have all the access to the information, and that you should be handling that. But since you did bring that up, I do have a question. Is it true that supervisors, you get paid like 80 bucks a week or something, a little bit more, that your health care isn't paid for?
There's no supervisor that takes advantage of that program.
We do get a salary, absolutely.
It's a stipend.
You get... What do you mean a stipend?
It's considered a stipend.
It's considered a stipend. Based upon the population size, the state sets a rate.
Right. It's like 4100 or something.
4100 or something. Two or something like that.
My question is, do you get your health care paid for?
There is a provision in our local statutes for board members to have reimbursable health insurance, but there's not one board member that has that.
Is... Can you... Is that verified with Nick?
That is true.
Okay. Then why is it on there?
Don't trust me, Frank?
No. No, no, I didn't put it that way. I'm just saying that... I'm just saying that is... If it's not used, then why do you have it on there?
Go ahead.
It's just the law. The law says you can have it, but nobody here exercises it.
Will we be notified when that does?
If you want.
Well, I mean, maybe it's an expense, and also my last thing is...
It's also... Just from my perspective of serving in other forms, that there is no compensation. It's an unfortunate commentary, but sometimes people that run for elected office are only gonna do it if there is some compensatory, you know, benefit to doing it. I'm not saying that's the right reason to run for office, but I've been lucky to serve with a lot of what I would call qualified people, but you know, it's tough to get somebody to basically, you know, volunteer their time and really hope to add some benefit to the community without having some type of incentive in place. I'm not saying you should take advantage of it or not, but I'm saying I think that's part of the theory behind it.
My understanding is that when Ray was in charge, when Ray Eraldi was chairman, that that was not... That was not an active provision.
There was a provision. Ray eliminated it.
Ray eliminated.
Right, and which I didn't agree with.
Then it's been reinstated.
That's correct.
Okay. One other thing. We have... I'll make this quick. Concerning the budget, we have reserves. I think the reserves should be made for a case of emergency, not for budget shortfalls. I think that the board should pass a resolution to have a balanced budget, that expenditures do not exceed revenue, and that so then we do not have to pay taxes. A tax increase goes up because of shortfalls. To take care of that through the reserves, that's not what it's for, and we should be more responsible... The township should be more responsible to our citizens. What do you guys think of that?
How would you account for the cost of living every year?
Well, there's a... You include that, and that's a cost.
So, then you would have to cut things like public safety to make...
You don't have to cut public safety. There's many things to cut, you know, that... There's training, better training, better supplies, and that's your decision, how to do that. It's not us. We don't know all the modifications.
I'll just give you some more information. About 72 or is it 74% of the budget of Lower Southampton, correct me if I'm wrong, is that mostly just for police and fire?
Yeah, we were told 65.
I'm just... I said police and fires. Is it 72?
I believe that sounds about right.
72 is what it is, and the 26% pays for everything else. So, if... And I said this at that December meeting, if you're gonna start cutting, you're not gonna cut from the 26%, because there's not a lot... There's not a lot there. You have to look at the 72%. So, I understand the argument you're trying to make, Frank, and I'm not saying...
It's not... I'm just stating.
Statement, you know, debate, whatever you want to call it, but it's impractical in especially organization like a municipality to think that you're gonna get the savings you need out of the least portion of the budget. It would have to be...
It's just simple math. $600,000 out of 13.8 million.
Mr. Chrisanthus, you're...
It's three cents. It's three cents out of the dollar. Now, we're not that efficient. I'm sure there's ways that the township can save money without raising our taxes. That's all I'm saying. And the effort needs to be made without the...
So, 14 years of effort of not raising taxes.
The effort is made every year.
No, I do realize that.
Every year, the effort is made.
The township, you know, we pay for that.
And we also pay for it.
I realize that.
We also pay for it too, Frank.
Every effort should be made not to raise our taxes.
Of course. And it is.
I agree with you.
Yeah, but I mean, efficiency...
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else tonight for public comment? All right? You state your name. If you could log your name and your address in the logbook, we'd appreciate it, and we do try to keep to a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Catherine Graham, and I wrote down my comments, and it's not gonna be even three minutes. My husband and I live at 1312 East Pine Street. We bought our home almost 13 years ago and appreciate living here, especially how neighbors take pride in care of their homes. There's a house at 1320 East Pine Street, which is a rental property. Around the summer of 2024, we noticed a lot of items being stored on the front lawn of that property, then more stuff being moved out and replaced by other items on the lawn. Used furniture and appliances, not just one or two items. I'm talking about lots of stuff, furniture, appliances, glassware, knickknacks, to name a few. The backyard has a lot of items in it also. It almost looks like it's a business, like a used furniture and appliance business going on, except it's on this beautiful street that we live on. It's been reported to the township on numerous occasions, by myself a few times, but when I spoke to people in the township, they told me that they were well aware of it, that they had sent people around. Township employees have been to the property. One employee told me in December that it was being turned over to the county courts in Doylestown. That employee mentioned photographs that were sent to the township by neighbors. I didn't send them. I have some on my phone from back in December, but I didn't send them. She also asked me to tell neighbors to stop calling the township because it would be out of their hands once it was reported to the county court system. Our committee man suggested I present this concern at the public comment part of this meeting tonight. If you lived on our street, I think you would be horrified by how this looks and what's the impact on homeowners who may want to sell their property, or the impression that possible buyers get when they drive by. I would never have moved here if this property had appeared like this 13 years ago, so I'm respectfully asking for your help and intervention in getting this property cleared of all this stuff permanently and enforcement of laws if there are any that would address it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and our zoning officer is listening, and I see him nodding his head. Mr. Italia, could you chime in and kind of give us an update? I see that you were nodding your head.
Yeah, this property's a disaster. It's in court. We're waiting for a hearing date. We're expecting it to be within the next month. We're waiting for the owner to be served. They have to plead not guilty first to get a hearing, so there was probably a warrant issued for them, would be my guess, but that's where it's at. We're well aware of it.
Okay.
So, we're getting there. Public Works was cutting grass, right? During the summer?
Yes.
When they have hearings and stuff like that, and it goes to court, are the neighbors allowed to attend those proceedings?
Yeah, they're more than welcome to come as witnesses.
So, how do we let them know when that's happening?
We don't really, because there's a lot of cases. That would be a whole separate thing.
So, how...
If all of them stay pretty tuned, they'll reach out to me on a frequent basis and say, hey, one's hearing, and I'll let them know, but that's where it's at.
All right, so how can we let them know when the hearing's coming up?
All she has to do is send me an email, and we'll let her know.
And because I've never been involved in anything like this, how does it proceed?
I was just gonna ask Mike. Mike, could you give them the...
I'm prosecuting the case in the local jurisdiction, and if it goes to the county court, Tracy's firm would handle it from there, because I'm not an attorney, so...
Because it's a hot mess.
Yeah, you should go to the first one that he goes to when the case comes up.
I'm down with Judge Baronaski's office.
Mike, could you just real quick inform the public, you know, why it generally takes a lot of time to address these issues?
Yeah, so they first get a door hanger, which gives you five days for compliance or at least call us, and then if we don't hear anything from there, you get a 30-day notice, and after the 30-day notice, it goes to citation. This is where it hangs up. The citation, somebody needs to accept it, plead guilty or not guilty. If they plead guilty, we just get notified that the case is closed, and then we have to recite them, and then order file a petition into the Court of Common Pleas in Doylestown to get the case actually heard. If they plead not guilty, then they'll schedule a hearing, usually within like 30 days. Sometimes it takes a bit. They have to issue a warrant, which is, I believe, what happened in this case, because the defendants were not local, from what I understand. They have to go find them and actually serve them, so that's what takes a lot. This one, we've been battling this one a while.
Well, but the landlord must live somewhere because he collects rent.
Yeah.
They can mail it in, or Venmo or electronic payments.
No, they have to be... If it's a warrant, they have to be served.
No, but she's...
They're only set to citation, and it just hangs there, and then we have to come to force hand.
It's... Unfortunately, with a lot of things in government, it's not as streamlined a process as it would be. Property owners basically given the benefit of the doubt, and you have to go through the strips.
Just so that you know, the landlord is selling this house, and we are in communication... I'm looking it up right now. We're in communication with the due buyers, and it looks like, I don't know, I don't have the stunt with dates, but it looks like the UNO inspection is probably scheduled for this week.
Urban occupancy.
Occupancy, so they make sure that it's... People can live in the dwelling, not believe.
Mike, did you say there was a lien on that property already?
What's that?
This is Tracy. Did you say there was already a lien on that property?
Yeah, it's a Public Works one for grass cutting and whatnot.
Okay. And if the property isn't cleaned up even before the court proceeding is done, they won't get a UNO from us, so they won't be able to complete the sale of the house, correct?
They're gonna have to satisfy the lien as well before the lien clears out.
Right, right. I hope that helps.
That might be a result. They sell the house. It might be a result.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. Mr. Dubos, sir, I see. Would you like to come up to the microphone?
Yeah, sure. Len Dubos, 100 Bowman Drive, Feasterville. I just have a question. What happens if that's a fire hazard or a public safety risk? I don't know if it is, but I'm saying, isn't the police or the fire guys want to get involved in this? Before the courts, I understand that process, because we go through it in our HOA process as well, but if it's a... You know, it may be another hazard out there that these people need to mitigate.
Mr. Italia?
Sir, the Constitution protects the most with your private property. That's...
I understand.
You can't just go on somebody's property like that. It just doesn't work that way.
I understand that, but if it were on fire, would you put it out?
Well, yeah. But, yeah, that's the...
Okay.
As is.
I understand. I'm just asking a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubos. Yes, sir. How are you?
Good.
Good. Thank you for coming tonight. If you could state your name.
John Prosser, 1339 Roberts Avenue, and I'm calling on the board and the township manager. General Asphalt's has been working on the road since September.
What road was that?
Roberts Avenue. Currently, they have a box truck parked on the turn by Ukrainian Federal, and they're staging their material the other side of the turn. It's complete... And there's no parking zone as well. Hasn't moved. They're starting now a project on Buck Road. They blocked the road for... I mean, we've gone to work 15 minutes, seemed like an incredible amount of time, and it will not move, so it's substandard work. The road's collapsing. I see no supervision, no engineering. They're... It's like the inmates are running the asylum on the project. I know there are an independent contractor working for PICO, but they're ripping up a township road, and they're putting it back substandard, and there's no supervision there, you know, other than the residents. The road is keyed in almost four foot by 1512 Roberts Avenue, and the homeowner put this caution cones in there, and it took him four days to get out there and put a road plate on it. So, it's a mess. I realize that there can be no really feedback tonight, but I welcome response in two weeks from today. I welcome someone from the road crew go out and look at the fine job they're doing to our... I've lived in the road for 34 years. I don't come to this meeting very often. I never do, but it's egregious. It's... At the fire department was here, they would state beside me how bad they had the road treated. There was an accident by a giant last Friday, and it was total bedlam. Right there from that, right?
Rich, can you offer some comments?
See some pictures over? As we speak, there's some...
Do you have any comments you can offer?
I already did. What is your...
He signed it.
Yeah, he signed it.
Can we read it, John?
Not really. Do my phone number? Yeah, put your phone number.
Mr. Roberts, do you have any knowledge of what's being said or...
So, we are not doing the inspection because it's a public utility.
Right.
They submit for road opening permit.
Right.
They get some leeway because they are a public utility, and they are under the constraints of...
Well, what gives them the right to stage your trucks and materials on the railway for four months? Quarter potty, and they're staging, they're putting there to work on Buck Road.
If not, this is a fight that we have every time PICO does any sort of work in the township.
Okay.
It is a difficult situation.
It's a difficult situation. The only thing that I can hopefully relate to you that the paving that's done now is only temporary, because they need to come back and put down permanent asphalt.
Where are they?
Over their trench.
Their trench.
So, there'll be two feet cut outside of that, and they need to pave it back to standards because at this point, it's the temperature and the weather is only temporary.
I understand it.
So, in the spring, if there's still complaints, we can forward that to PICO, and hopefully there'll be a resolution. I also am aware that there is a plate on Roberts Road for storm sewer that's collapsing.
That's from yourself, right?
That is... That's Lower Southampton. We are in the process of doing a design and putting out to get bids for that, that hopefully should be done in the spring.
All right. Maybe we can get a ticket for the box truck on the turn there.
I mean, we can reach out to PICO and, you know...
Ticket, the, ticket to the band, it's been there for almost three weeks on a no parking.
We can reach out to Pico and ask for some clarification and, you know, request that they park somewhere else.
It's supposed to no parking now.
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't we have our Smithmore Police Department and Mr. Coppins go out and assess the situation?
And they got their materials staged on the other side of the road. It's down like an eight-foot cartway there, right? Yeah, okay. Thanks.
It's not just Lower Southampton.
I know. I got a bad little.
Thank you, Mr. Kreiser, we appreciate it.
Hello, sir, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Very good.
Michael Connolly, 1309 Roberts Avenue.
Ah, former supervisor, Michael Connolly.
We're tough, right?
Well, I sat in your spot, and I sat in Rich's spot, so I do know what I'm talking about when it comes to this stuff. As a township engineer, you do have the authority, because you are the authority of having jurisdiction over utilities. So you have to oversee what's going on, what's out there as well. There, they have a third-party person, but you still have responsibilities.
There's no escrow set up for the cost.
That's not my problem. There's an escrow for you to be set up as the township engineer. There's, there's money that rotted for you to do that stuff.
I haven't been asked to do that at this point.
Oh, that's when these guys, and when they come in and redo the road, I want the whole thing done, because prior to that, our road was done three years ago, or four years ago, and Richard's was done. It looks like there's more markings on there from the PA One calls, and it goes from the top of Roberts all the way down to the farmhouse. And the swath of, the disruption is 30 inches wide. When they came in and put the macadam back in, they didn't tamp it, they didn't do anything. They just put the stuff down there, and it was all, it's all over the road. So right at Condi and Roberts, there's a big sinkhole there. When you go down in front of the farmhouse down there, there's a great big sinkhole, and my wife called and talked to Rich about it. They came out and put the plates in. But there's a lot of kids down there. Right now, it's bad, and I don't know what happened this time with the snowstorm. My roads never looked this bad. I drove around the whole township on Sunday, or Monday morning. It's deplorable. I don't know what, you know, I heard that the Public Works guys were pulled off, they're not putting salt down. The roads, there's more salt out in this parking lot than there is on any street in the township. Why is that? How did Montgomery County look?
You referring to me, sir?
Yes.
My area didn't get plowed.
Okay.
They just used brine.
But we don't have brine. But we have a ton of salt, and we didn't have hardly any of it out there.
From what I'm told, we didn't have a ton of salt, we had a minimum amount of salt to be used, and.
Well, you're in a consortium, why don't you have?
With Morton, Morton is sporadic at best right now. So I don't know how it is in your township or whatever.
No, I'm in this township, I live here.
No, I mean, did you work in that, in another township?
No, I worked here.
Other than here?
And I'm the deputy director of operations for the county.
Okay, that's fine. So all I know is Morton is sporadic.
You've had, there's been no snow events, other than the last two, this year.
How much salt have you, have you used, Rich?
There's been seven events this year.
Yeah.
December 20th, December 24th, January 3rd, January 6th, January 11th.
Come on, Ed, you know what they are, they're nuisance.
January 19. I know, but they probably put down 50 to 100 ton every, every one of those.
If that was 50 or 100 tons of salt put on these streets, they would, they would not look the way they did. But it was only three inches where we had. My street was from, street road all the way down was a sheet of ice. Condi was the same way. Hoover was the same way. They were, I mean, Woodbine looked fine. Then the other thing is, from the tap, from Bustleton Avenue at Fillmont, where you come into the township, there's 13 street lights out. Where's the liquid fuels money at to fix those lights? I don't want to hear it's a Pico problem either.
You're totally referring to the, the lights that go down Bustleton that went out? So we checked a lot, we checked those taps, and we had to tell, you know, Pico that it was underground, and they were supposed to come out and start repairing it, so we can, you know, get the lights back in operation.
But if God forbid, there's an accident, because when I was a supervisor, we got sued, and we lost because of inadequate illumination of the cartway. That's what they got us on. Us, Upper Morland, and Upper South, we all got sued, and it was just because of that. So I know Armour doesn't have anything on the books for it, and if it is a Pico problem, we got to get it addressed, because right there at Ruth, yeah, Ruth, where the Giant used to be, there's four lights right there as you go up out of the township and go down Bridgetown Pike. And I, and Teddy can tell you how many accidents have been in that area. There's a lot, and usually when there's an accident there, they're not good. It's usually either someone's really hurt or fatalities. I know you guys do a good job, I'm not saying yous don't do a good job, but from what I've been told, the last event, you only had two people in.
This last event?
No, the one before this one.
We had six men.
I'm here in the Public Works for deciding the township. I know when, when I was here, our streets were, they looked like this table. They were perfect, curb to curb, all the way through the township. Everybody always said how great of a job we did. And we didn't do anything different. They got there, they did their job, and that's it. So again, I sat in your spot, and I sat in your spot. So I know what I pay in taxes, I know what a lot of other people pay in taxes. Alls we want is the quality services that we deserve. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, we appreciate that. Anybody else tonight for public comment?
I'm Robin Neves, committee man, District West Five, where the Grahams live, and I live across three from them. Then I'm making it up with these people, and it has a really, it's a really mess, it's a mess. I don't want to, let me talk, talk about that anymore, but I want to know where the responsibility lies. Is it with the person renting that property, or the owner of that property, which who lives in Philadelphia, I believe? So, so really, anything happening to that property, it's the owner. The people living there basically are off the hook, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Italia, you're shaking your head no, sir.
No, you left both of them accountable, we go after both parties. Because you rent somewhere, doesn't mean you can come dump, and trying to use proper words, you get what I'm getting at.
So when the hearing occurs in Doylestown, or wherever it's going to be, the renters will be, will have to show there, is that what you're saying?
Well, they don't have to, we, if the court subpoenas, I'm sure, we, we go after everybody.
Okay, that's, that was, that was the question.
A lot of times, absolutely, they have no idea what's going on, if they're like out of the area, until we send them pictures, and they're, we hit the big eyes.
Just want you to know that District West Five is a pretty immaculate area. The homeowners are all, they're on the ball, everybody, and then you got one that's just kind of messing it up for everyone, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neves, thank you. Anybody else tonight for public comment?
I just want to comment that, that it's not just Pine Street that they're talking about.
Can you state your name, please?
At Jarderos, 1724 Anna Avenue, and I'm sure you are aware of the one that's on Hazel, the corner of Hazel and Second. That's like a dumping ground.
Which one on Hazel, there's a couple.
It's, oh, yeah, I'll talk about the corner of, it's been forever, because I drive up Hazel all the time to get to my house. It's Second and Hazel. It's that corner property, Second and Hazel, the corner property.
Yeah.
That is a dumping ground. At one point, he had a big tent, and he was renting to people.
Yeah.
In that tent, so.
That's the one where you actually went and started cleaning out the property. He's, that's at the county level.
That was it?
There's a corner with that one, with that guy, and it's, yeah.
And his neighbor too built something up too, so, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, we thought it was that guy. It's the, the guy in the corner is, the Ford, I forget his last name, but we authorized the junk kick guys there to start pulling stuff out. There's a whole county court.
He had like a, a hot tub on the side, like just.
Oh, yeah.
It was bad. So you think yours is bad, ours is bad too.
Thank you, Mrs. DeRosa, thank you very much. Anybody else tonight for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'd like to move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, line item one, A, approval of minutes, December 18th, 2024. B, approval of minutes, January 6th, 2024. C, approval of accounts payable, January 22nd. I think I might have made a mistake with line item B, I think I had said January 6th, 2024. If I did, I apologize, I meant to say 2025. C, approval of accounts payable, January 22nd, 2025. D, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, January 22nd, 2025. E, ratification of accounts payable, January 15th, 2025. F, ratifications of certain reoccurring monthly bills, January 15th, 2025. G, approval of construction escrow release number two for Sunset Memorial Park for the amount of $427,126.11. And H, approval of construction escrow release number four for Blunden Builders, 23 Trivers Road, for the amount of $32,053.92. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman. I'll second her motion.
All right. Mrs. Bowman made the motion, Mr. Castle made the second, any discussion? Oh, Mr. Kates, yes, sir.
Just a question, does that mean Sunset Memorial Park finished those retention, detention bases?
Well, we'd let Mr. Italia down it.
That's Mr. Roberts.
Mr.?
Mr. Italia, which one's?
So it's 95% done, there's still approximately $400,000 left in escrow. There's some shrubs that need to be planted that will be in spring, and then there'll be a final inspection, and then we'll enter maintenance.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Line item number two, consider approval of the stipulation in order for Stone Moore P A L L C tentative. Mr. Hunter.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Board Chairman. This deals with a tax assessment appeal that dates back to 2021 and is in the Court of Common Pleas in Bucks County. It involves Stone Moore P A L L C and the Bucks County Board of Assessment, along with the Nishamni School District, Lower Southampton Township, the Bucks County Board of Assessment Appeals, and the County of Bucks. This has been an ongoing thing, obviously with the 2021 docket number on it. However, the parties have come to what would be a settlement stipulation, and so tonight, for consideration and approval of the board, it would be authorization for the township solicitor to sign on behalf of Lower Southampton Township, this stipulation, which would also be signed by the other parties to this action, and it will be filed with the Court of Common Pleas, settling the tax assessment appeal brought by Stone Moore P A L L C. It would also prohibit either of the parties initiating any further tax assessment appeal at least through the 2027 tax years. So.
Go ahead, Tracy, I'm sorry.
That's, that's.
So the way I understand it, the township is going to lose over the terminus agreement $15,000, $15,300?
These are in credits, not in.
Right, we have to get credits on future.
Yes, this would be, these would be tax credits.
What do we reduce our future income by $15,300?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
$15,527 to be.
$527, okay. And the school district's losing $188,000.
That would be correct. In Bucks County is $28,868, yeah.
Okay. And this has been through all the assessments.
And these are credits going forward, by the way.
Right, I understand the credit's going forward, there's still money off the books we're losing, because we're paying them, the credits are for the back taxes.
Right.
Right.
This would be over a three and a half year period.
Right, okay.
And all of that, yeah, is laid out in the stipulation, that's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this time then, the motion would read to approve the stipulation in order for Stone Moore P A L L C and authorize the solicitor to sign documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotano, any discussion from the board?
I'd just like to say to the public, these are very commonplace at the school district, we dealt with them all the time. Very rarely, especially in a, in a period after there's been a recession, do you ever come out ahead on these things? You always come out generally on the bottom end, unless you can prove that the, that they made some improvements that have increased the value. So we might be in a cycle, because I've also seen this happen, Cindy's been there for years, too, she's seen it happen to that, sometimes you run into a cycle where a whole bunch of properties start to go at once, and so yet, you know, once they get it assessed, and if assessors agree, you basically have no choice but to accept the assessment. Of course, it does work both ways, sometimes you get lucky, you get an increase, but most of the times, you're on the lower.
That's why I was asking a question with Frank with regard to the, the future years being, I believe, six and seven, 26 and 27, to see what the improvements that they've done there, and if there was any impact for a revale, are we barred from that revale? And that's where we're a little bit unsure on.
I think you're barred from the revale until the, the time period.
Runs out.
You are, there is some language in the stipulation, if it was, if it was a county-wide reassessment, that that could open it up during that time period, but otherwise, the stipulation states that neither side, the taxpayer, they can't try to seek further reductions either. But neither side, for the tax years 26 and 27, they would be precluded from filing appeals.
All right, any further discussion from the board?
We have a question from the audience.
Mr. Kates, sir?
I'm sorry, Stone Moore, that's, they own cemeteries, correct?
Correct.
They own Sunset Memorial Park, and is the nature of the improvements, the fact that they had to fix the, the Stone Water problem they caused?
Mr. Evans, Mr. Italia, anybody like to chime in with that? So.
Expanded the cemetery, I understand that, and they have more ability to get more lots sold, but they also, after they were cited by the county for doing stuff without permits, you guys, I know how to go after them, and you had to force them to, to do what they had to do, but that's my question.
So, so you're trying to probe the hell, how should I put this? How backwards the system works? So you're trying, okay, just, just checking, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kates.
Good point, thank you for pointing, thank you for pointing that, what we were all thinking.
The obvious.
All right, so we had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Line item number three, consider adoption of Resolution 2025-9, compensation for a tax collector. Mr. Galdo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. The resolution addresses the compensation dealing for the elected tax collector position, the tax collector handles the real estate tax, the refuse fees, and the per capita's. We need to get this kind of passed, there's a deadline of February 15th, 2025. There has not been an increase in, in about six years for this. The resolution allows for 2% increases in each year for 2026, 27, 28, and 29. That's all I have for you, Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Galdo. So the motion would read to adopt Resolution 2025-9, compensation for a tax collector. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Line item number four, appointment to the library board for a three-year term. So, at our reorganization meeting, the board had appointed Kate Barnes to fill a vacancy at the library board. Unfortunately, after the appointment, Mrs. Barnes had to decline the appointment, so it comes back to us tonight. At this time, the board could put a motion on the floor to repost the vacancy, or we could put a motion on the floor to pick from the remaining two candidates. What would the board like to do?
I think we should repost the, the notice. If someone applied for this position, it might have been back in October, or November, or December, we're three months later now, so there might, you know, still be an interest, and, and I guess there was one or two other people that were interested, they could still resubmit.
All right then, so then the motion would be to repost the vacancy to the library board for a three-year term. The motion was made by Mr. Castle, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman, any other discussion from the board?
The only thing I would request is that we make an effort to reach out to the other two applicants, to make sure they know we're reposting, and if they want to, want us to reconsider, reconsider their, their resumes.
Spoke to Christine today about that, she will be reaching out to them tomorrow.
Terrific.
All right then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Moving on to manager's report, Mr. Galdo, sir. Oh, no, excuse me, excuse me, line item five, I'm rushing. Yes, yes, yeah. Consider adoption, line item five, consider adoption of resolution 2025-10, amended fee schedule. Mr. Italia, sir, this one's all you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Uh, so it's our, it's our annual update. It includes updated tapping fees, lean fees, some modifications to the building permits. Uh, nothing insane. We're pretty much in line with the other municipalities surrounding with us. Uh, that covers operational costs, uh, the technology improvements we're making and those type of things. So just getting in line with, you know, where we are, so. Appreciate board. It's all outlined in there. Anything yellow is an increase and any grants being strictly, uh, for the fee schedule being moved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Italia. So the motion would read to adopt resolution 2025-10, amending the fee schedule for 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Galdo, now it's your turn, sir. Manager's report.
Thank you, Board Chair. Just two quick items. Uh, again, cleanup day is Saturday, 4/26, April 26, starting at 9:00 AM and I believe it goes to 12:00 PM. Uh, sanitation rebate program will be kicking off on, uh, February 6th and that runs till May 31st. Again, just a reminder, uh, it's for lower south residents, uh, senior citizens between the age or, or at the age of 65 or older. Um, also, if you're a veteran, that's 50% or exceeding 50% dis, disabled, uh, you're, you're able to get this rebate. Uh, must be a homeowner for the entire year of 2024. Uh, have to be a primary residence only, must be 65 years old by 12/31/2024 and the tax bill has to be paid in full by 12/31/24 to be eligible for the rebate. That's all I have, Board Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galdo. Moving on to supervisors' comments. As always, ladies first, Mrs. Bowman.
I just wanted to, uh, again, congratulate Father Mike. He will definitely be missed by our community. Um, and, you know, we have these board openings. A lot of people come out, they want to get involved, more involved in their community, more involved in what's going on in the township and serving on those boards is a great way to get started. It's a great way to learn. Uh, we have a library board vacancy. Um, always check the website on the left-hand side of the website. It says other boards. Click on the boards. Look and see where we have vacancies. It's a great way to get started. Um, you know, if you want to learn about your community, volunteer and get more involved and take a leadership role. And that's really all I had to say. So have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Perrotto, sir?
Uh, I just want to thank everyone that came out, everyone that stayed through the whole meeting and also appreciate it. Uh, so, um, you know, sometimes, you know, we have people that don't agree with what they see and some that do, and it's our job to address those situations. We try with every situation that comes up here. Some of them aren't solvable. Many of them are and so, and it's our job to make sure the administration addresses them and, and does so. And I just want to assure the public that, that that does happen. It is occurring. And if you have an issue that is not being dealt with, reach out to a board supervisor. All our addresses, you can do that through mailing the, uh, the email address through the, uh, the township website or you can just call the township and tell them that you want to leave a message for a supervisor to call you back. And then, I don't know anybody that wouldn't call you back to see how we can help you work through the problem. So again, uh, thank you all for coming out, sharing your opinion. I want to thank the chief for the yearly report we got. I haven't had a chance to fully go through it, but I appreciate you getting to us in timely fashion and, um, everybody have a, have a great evening and, uh, stay safe in the cold.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perrotto. Voice, Chair Castle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always an honor to precede you. Uh, I want to thank the audience. It's always great to have our residents come out and hold our feet to the fire. And to those who are watching from home, including my parents, thank you very much. Um, we're here to serve you and sometimes we swing and hit a home run and sometimes you don't get a home run. So, but thank you very much. Please sign up for our emails, lowersouthamptontownship.org. There's notices out there. Um, once a week you get a notice. It's not overbearing, so please sign up. I'd also like to, uh, thank Father Mike for his service to our assumption community and in general. I know Father Mike helped out with Chairman Koutzrotis's, uh, motorcycle run several years ago, leading the invocation for that. And, uh, he's a wonderful man and there's a lot of individual lives that he's impacted that we'll never know, but those individuals will probably never forget that experience. Our Parks and Rec program is gearing up for the spring. Please go on the township website and find out all the, um, activities that are available for not just for youth, but there's also adult classes and things like that. It's very interesting. Our next meeting, if I could announce that, will be February 12th. So thank you for coming out and, uh, you're back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Thank you. Well, first off, I think I need to address the fact that I think Mr. Castle switched the chairs around tonight because I'm feeling a little on the short side, which normally, which normally isn't the case. I, I think when I wasn't looking, you, uh, you got a little switcheroo there, so. I feel a little short tonight and I'm looking at the giant to my left.
You did have a good picture of him.
Yes, you did. Yeah, he's, he's a jokester, this fellow, I'll tell you. But all kidding aside, you know, as it's already been said tonight, Father Mike, if you're listening from home, sir, thank you very, very much for impacting my life, my family's life, friends of mine's life and obviously with the, uh, with the group of people that came out tonight, you've just done a terrific job. You will be missed. I'd also like to congratulate the Christmas house decorating contest winners. You know, things like that mean, mean so much to our township. And at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.